Everyone, morning to members, and we haven't got any members of the public, and morning to officers as well. Normal housekeeping. If there are no planned fire alarm tests, so if the fire alarm does sound, please exit the building at the rear of this room, exit the actual building itself, and collect in the car park opposite. If you have a mobile phone, can you please put it on silent or turn it off? In line with the guidance on social media, I'm happy for anyone attending to the meeting today, including members of the council, to use social media, providing it doesn't actually disturb the business of the meeting today. I'd ask you to please speak clearly into the microphones, and I hope you're hearing me now, which then proves I'm doing that. And also, when you finish speaking, actually turn the microphone off. Due to this meeting being webcast, you will follow the seating plan, which I hope everyone is following the seating plan that has been allocated, and if there are any issues with this, please speak with our officer, Richard Plummer, who will resolve any issues you may have. Apologies for absence, have we received any?
Yes, indeed, we've received apologies from Matt Fairness this morning.
Thank you. Yes, I'm going to get busier. Not yet, not yet, not yet, not yet. We have someone far more important within our midst for that. Decorations of interest, have we any declarations of interest?
None received, unless there's any this morning.
Thank you. And questions and petitions, any received?
Once again, non-received.
Thank you. Responses from Cabinet, there have been two responses from the Deputy Leader, John Fury, to issues referred to in the Cabinet by the Select Committee, and those have been circulated. Has anyone, any questions with regard to those, that information that was circulated? No, I think you're safe on that one, Colin, and I'm going to ask you to speak in a few moments, so you might want to prepare yourself. One valuable item that I did miss earlier on, but I'll pick up now, and that is the minutes of the previous meeting have been circulated. Do we have any amendments, or are you happy that they are a true reflection of the last meeting? Thank you, I'll sign those minutes off later on, thank you for that. We now move on to the first item on the agenda, which is affordable housing, item six, and I know that we have a slight delay by Tracey Evans, who's on her way here, but we have Julian Wayne and councillor Colin Kemp here as witnesses. You've all read the papers, I assume, of item six, and I'm sure you've all got lots of questions. One question that I would like to start the proceedings off with, I know that in 2017, People Place Committee actually produced a report saying in 2017 there was no need for affordable housing to be increased. I will move that nearer, is that any better? Let's, if I can see that there, and start increasing the volume, does that make any difference, or not? I'll move the mic closer, there you go, which I have, so I'll repeat that, in 2017 there was a report produced by People's and Place saying that there were insufficient demands for social housing, and I wondered if you've actually got any record of what has changed between, you're shaking your head. Sorry, my apologies, it was key workers, in fact, let me turn to the relevant section. It said that People Place and Development Committee said that there was insufficient demand from key workers for affordable housing. Now, one of the items in our present report is that that is a key factor, that there is an increased demand, and I wonder whether you have any evidence that what has changed between 2017 and the current group notes?
I don't know what fed into that report in 2017, but from my experience, both at county and also at borough level, I did two and a half years as Housing Portfolio at borough level, there is a great need for true affordable housing, key worker housing, and social housing, so I think that I've not known in my time of a lack of demand, so I'm not sure where that's come from and what's driven that, Chair, and I'm not aware of the report, so I can't really comment on the feedback of what they've put in, but all I can say is from my experience on the ground, that's not been the case. Social housing especially, there is a definite need, and every borough and district will tell you about the lists and waiting lists they have, and I think partly the issue has become is the differential between affordable and what is truly affordable, and sometimes if you put eighty-five percent, ninety percent affordable out there, it actually makes no difference to retail, and it's a case of making things truly affordable, so, but I don't know where that key worker fact comes from, I don't know if Julian's seen or heard anything on this.
Chair, I hadn't seen that, I'm more than happy to go iron-located and see what the inputs and the drivers were, you know, as one of your advisers, I find it difficult to understand how that conclusion was come to, but I'm happy to look into it for you.
Thank you, we have a first question, Paul Deech.
Thank you, Chairman, excuse me, I read this report with a lot of interest, or I should say I listened to it, won't go into that, but one of the things that came out when I was reading the report is this, what you've just said there, Colin, true affordable housing. Now, we all know there are national definitions on affordable housing, and those of us that live in the real world know that actually affordable is far from what we all consider to be affordable, and I would love to know from either you, Colin, or one of the officers, when you say truly affordable, and that word comes up quite a lot in that report, what that actually means, does it mean what we consider to be truly affordable, or is it just some other definition that's been conjured up from somewhere that actually doesn't bear any resemblance to what the facts are? Thank you.
I'll let Julian do the technical response to that, but I'll give you a political response to that, and we are partly at fault in the political game, because we concentrate on numbers, we say we must have two hundred affordable, three hundred affordable, whatever the number is, what that does is drive that percentage up. If we said actually, instead of having two hundred affordable within a development at eighty-five percent, actually give me a hundred or a hundred and twenty at sixty or sixty-five percent, because it's all about the money, at the end of the day, the delivery of affordable housing is going to be driven by the money, and in Surrey it is really difficult because of the price of land, the price of getting things done, so it's always going to be driven by the money, and I think from a political, we've got to change the conversation about what we're asking for. Now, all boroughs have got their targets around the deliverable of affordable housing, but from a political standpoint, we need to be more open to that conversation about having less numbers, but having the correct number, because affordable housing can be anywhere between, and Julian will probably pick me up on what this exactly is, I think it's anywhere between forty-five and ninety or ninety-five percent of the local market rent, so forty-five up to about fifty, fifty-two is social housing, which will come into your benefit levels and be payable by benefit, other than that, it is a percentage of the market rent, and that is normally, most boroughs and districts allocate that depending on your income streams, so if you earn between this band and this band, you're entitled to affordable housing, and each borough and district will deliver it differently. Do you have anything on that?
Yes, thank you, Chair, councillor Kemp, if you refer to the slides which set out the definitions, in essence, there are, I'll come back to key workers in a minute, there are in essence three types of housing that we're talking about here. Social housing, which as you know is largely let on a secure basis to people in need, provided by councils and housing associations, and since 2012, the rent has been determined on a formula basis, based on size, local earnings, and property values, subject, as you're probably aware, to a cap, although there is a certain amount of flexibility based on local circumstances. That is social housing, that is what frankly in the old days we'd have called council housing, and my increasingly grey hairs, you know, that was what it was when I was a young man. Now, affordable rented housing came in in the late 2000s, if my memory serves me correct, and again, as it says in the slides, affordable rented housing is typically at eighty percent of market value, it is, generally speaking, increased, and certainly will be now, increased by CPI plus one percent annually from 2020, the rents have regard again to the local market context, based on property size and the service provided, and one of the key issues here, and it clearly wouldn't be an issue in Surrey, but it would be in other parts of the country, is the rent can't be lower than the formula rent for council housing. And then there are also affordable housing products which are in between there, so shared ownership housing is determined as market housing, sorry, as affordable housing, so are the intermediate rent tenures between what we would now know as social housing and affordable rented housing, and, you know, across the country, there are still programmes which set rents at differential levels between that eighty percent and the, as councillor Kemp says, forty to fifty percent type level. Now, oh, sorry, and just on key workers, I mean, there are a number of key worker products, key workers actually can be, it can be market housing, which is covenanted and kept for key workers, it can be sub-market housing, either at rent or at sale, or it can of course be at social rents. Increasingly, there is now through planning policy, being delivered an approach whereby it is not merely key worker, but actually linked to employers, so hospitals and universities, for example, are now bringing forward sites and saying to the local authorities in their area, we will deliver these for housing where we may otherwise have sat on them, provided that that housing is linked to employment, and obviously in terms of the needs, that's quite an important point. Forgive me, this is a long answer, but it does set the context for you, in terms of what is truly affordable housing, truly affordable is a Surrey County Council word, there's no legal definition for that, that's what's in the Cabinet report, that's what residents are telling you they want. In the slides, it goes on, of course, to say, you know, what the needs are and what people can afford in Surrey, so I would put it to you that probably truly affordable housing in Surrey is set at social rents, because above that, the reality is that you will fairly quickly get to a point where people can't afford it. Now, that's not to say there may be some scope for shared ownership, that'll probably do very well in Surrey, and similarly for the intermediate rental products, but I think my advice to you would be that it is most likely that true to the fore that being housing in Surrey means social rents. Happy to take for the questions, I've probably rambled on enough already.
Thank you. The next question, councillor Thompson.
Yep, can I ask, I'm a bit confused how it's going to be delivered, are county going to build these homes, or are they going to be farmed out to, like, social housing people like Raven, who actually are not very good with their maintenance, so I'd like to know more about how it's going to happen, also, we have to consider the infrastructure, because our doctors and our schools, everything is bursting at the seams, so I actually would like, you know, something, you can tell me something better.
Again, we'll do a bit of a double act on that, because we're both involved in that side of it, so the delivery, at the end of the day, everything has to go through the boroughs and districts, so a key driver for all of this will be how the conversations goes with the borough and districts, and again, it's going to come down to those conversations about, like I've just talked about, we've got a driver that we want to deliver some key housing and all the rest of it, it will depend what the borough and district's planning departments throw at us, to how deliverable some of that is. About how it's going to be delivered, again, we're trying to work in partnerships, and Julian's doing a great piece of work, and I've been fortunate to go to a lot of the meetings, being in Righat and Banstead only last week, of engaging with the boroughs and districts and saying, right, here's all the land we've got, this is the things we would like to achieve, this are the services, we're doing it around the whole thing, what have you got in your area and how can we work together to deliver this, and then politically we go in, and I work with the borough and district councillors to say, what's going to be acceptable politically, locally, that we can deliver. As to delivering it on the ground, we've got the JV set up, which is now, we're now bringing the first lot together, and hopefully I'll have something even before or just after Christmas, so they are, so the places for people who are in the joint venture with are a social housing provider, so they are one of those sort of companies. It may be that we'll need to partner up with the boroughs and districts about the deliverability locally, so they can have some input in that, and again, each conversation is going to be separated. It is a challenge, the infrastructure, and again, the workshops that Julian is doing, we've got partners at the table, the meeting we had in Righat and Banstead, the health people were there, to understand what they need and how we can improve it locally, that's a slightly, that's probably a harder conversation than the boroughs and districts with the health partners to bring them to the table, and also it's about roads and everything else, so all of those conversations are going on, we're trying to bring it together, it is a mammoth puzzle with lots of bits and pieces, and one of the challenges I've put with the officers is, you know, if the health say they want to come to the party, we need to set a date, you either come to the table by this, or we're just going to go and get it done anyway, because we need to deliver the housing, we can't be sitting around having conversations for years and years, we need to start actually doing what it says on the tin and delivering it. Julian, I don't know if you have anything to that.
If I may, councillor Kemp, yeah, you have, I think, a succession of choices in this debate, the reason there are slides on the asset and place strategy in your pack is that the way which you can influence this is by use of your assets and your land, and the asset and place strategy is identifying what are the sites, what are the places that you can divest or indeed retain but build on to actually provide housing to affect the housing need and the housing situation in Surrey. So first of all, you as members will need to determine that these are the right sites you want to do it on, secondly, you will then need to determine that you're prepared to go ahead and do it, and then you have a choice about, well, actually, which of the things is going to be most important for us, is it actually going to be about truly affordable housing, as I'm sensing from your questions and from your request that it is, but also there's issues about income and finances, and of course, they will play a part as well, and then you're also going to have to make the other choices about, is this housing, is it business space, and so forth. But assuming that you've gone down that road and you choose to decide housing, then, I mean, I think you have another set of choices then, it's quite right, you can deliver it through housing associations, some of course are better than others, I think in fairness, and you will know your own local providers far better than I will, but often it is a matter of perception that actually council is good, housing association is bad, or indeed vice versa, the reality is some are good, some are less so, and I think you would need to test that in any event, but you can of course deliver housing through housing associations, the current terminology is registered providers, but that'll probably change in the next week or two, but that's what they're called at the moment. You can of course, and this will be particularly an issue now, because at the end of October, the borrowing cap for housing revenue accounts in the districts and boroughs was lifted by the government, and they will be developing housing, and it's not in the least bit beyond the bounds of possibility that you could do deals, and the local authorities themselves could deliver that housing for you and with you. Well, you have a local housing company, because you have Halsey Garton, your investment company, you have a delivery company, whose name escapes me for the moment, but you, no, no, I'm coming to that, yeah, but you have a delivery company, but you could actually set up local housing through your own companies, nothing stops county councils having local housing companies. Then there's the joint ventures point, and as councillor Kemp reminds me, you have places of people, there is a slide in your pack about that, you can put housing into that, sorry, land into that, they will bring working capital to do the development, and you can get both affordable and market housing out of that, and then of course you can simply do it by disposal through a development brief to developers, and you can insist on that through section 106, or you can make it a contractual term development agreement. What leads you to that choice, well frankly, it's really going to be about what the numbers are that you want, what the style of housing is that you want, what the best returns for you are that you want, and the truth of the matter is probably one size doesn't fit all, and you'll probably take a number of those routes, but you shouldn't necessarily consider that you're locked into one route. The pictures that are in your slide pack, I was asked to bring them in, and I think one of the things that they do show when you look at those is that, you know, social housing is not by any means poor quality, if it ever was, it certainly isn't now, similarly the affordable rented and the shared ownership project products are actually very good, and so you are not in any way by embarking on this journey, committing to build poor quality housing, that's really not the case. Just a word on maintenance standards, I mean, of course, you know, depending on the deal you do and how you do it, you can insist on particular maintenance qualities, and you can monitor it, but I mean, obviously you need to retain some degree of control if you're going to do that.
Thank you for that comprehensive response.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I hope you can hear me all right, good. I was, what I wanted to clarify was that we have affordable housing, and then we also have the Surrey Asset and Place Strategy all in the same item, and you touched on it in your reply as to why we have that, because to me, they're two entirely different things in a sense, that we should be looking at separately. Affordable housing, yeah, of course, very desirable, want to go for it, I believe that it is a requirement of the county council to get the maximum price for its land, whatever it is selling, or to give special reasons possibly because we want to house our staff or others, but it is required on us to get the maximum price, which of course goes a little bit against the flow of affordable, and particularly when you consider the financial situation of this council, to tell you the honest truth, I don't think we've got much option anyway to do that, and it's very nice, but I don't quite see how we're going to square the two personally, but I really wanted to move on, and also all our assets through our companies is producing income, what we desperately need, like Garton and all the others, and so again, I can't see that, you know, us being able to reduce that income on the basis of trying to provide affordable housing or deals to the others, and we must look to the borough councils more to do that at the moment, because they're not in the financial dire straits that we are here at county, and are likely to continue to be as it stands, but obviously, we definitely want to work together and do everything we can to facilitate that, but what really interests me is the asset and place strategy that you've come up with, which is really talking about our own property, and how we are going to, how, you know, kind of have, give workplaces to our staff, and all of that area, which to me is an entirely separate subject, and so what I wanted to ask about was that, from what I see going through this scrutiny committee, if I'm correct, Mr. Chairman, is that there is a council's asset strategy board, and then there is going to be a panel, an asset advisory panel, and I understand that there are going to be two councillors on that advisory panel, and I'm assuming that this committee will be scrutinising what is happening with that panel, and therefore also the asset strategy board, and I would like to put myself forward to be one of the two councillors on the advisory panel, if that's within our gift, and to see how it works with this committee on a scrutiny basis, as will we be scrutinising the advisory panel and the whole of our programme on our asset, so I'm wondering if you could clarify that for me.
I was going to ask, you sneaked in at the back end of there with a question, so I was going to ask you for a question, but yes, we will be reviewing that scrutiny panel, so would you like to add anything to that, Julian?
Chair, if I may, three or four points, I think, firstly on the asset and place strategy, it's linked, as I said, the brief is to look at your assets and see how you can best use them to support the debate, and it is by using your land that this issue comes forward. As far as the issue about income and finances and the delivery of affordable housing, I mean, that is absolutely correct, you as members have a choice to make as to which is ultimately your priority, there's no question about that, you can have a mix of course, but the reality is, as you mix, you get less of either, or more of one and more of the other, so undoubtedly, you know, you can, it may be one of the recommendations you might make to want to make to your Cabinet when they ultimately decide on the strategy, as to which, where that balance falls, because it's quite right, you have choices here, but they're choices that you do need to make. On the section 123 of the Local Government Act 1972 point, the duties to obtain best value, that is quite right, but when the Secretary of State or your independent valuer signs off, one of the things that they take into account is why you're taking less value, and affordable housing clearly is one of those reasons why they will do that, if you always took the highest value, you would always take the market housing, and that clearly would be an unsustainable position, so this can be a justification for section 123 being reduced, so you know, legally it's quite possible and not a difficulty. I think the final thing, I have realised that I didn't make any comment about infrastructure in the previous answer, very briefly, the point about infrastructure is well made, you have a local infrastructure statement, the numbers that come out of your requirements are quite significant, in another place I might have said telephone numbers, and big though your assets are, they will not enable all of that infrastructure, so yes, with each development, the infrastructure needs need to be considered very carefully.
Thank you very much, councillor Kemp.
Yeah, just to give the political answer to some of that, the issue is, is when we've, the boroughs are the planning authority, so actually it's part of that conversation, and actually coming to an agreement, we'll say we're going for the highest money, they'll say they want some affordable housing, actually we need to deliver affordable housing as well, because it's, you know, we've got a public duty to try and support that, so it's a case of working together, if any of you are double haters or you have influence locally, part of this conversation, and we'll come up with a plan, and you look at some of the nice pictures in here of some of those units which are three or four storeys tall, so we'll come up with a business plan that we can deliver, thirty percent units within that, that are sixty percent, sixty-five percent of market rate, so a good middle range affordable units within the area, you take it to a local planning committee who says, actually, we don't want three storeys, you can only build it two storeys, going to throw all the maps out the window, so you really, we really need to have those balanced conversations and work with the planning, local planning authorities of our boroughs and districts, and we've got to get that message out there in the political arena as well, so any of you are double haters, to have them conversations locally, to really have a balanced approach to the delivery of affordable housing, if that's what we really want to do.
Thank you. We've got another four questions to ask here, but can I ask, what have you identified in our current estate portfolio that we can actually free up or divest to actually reinvest into affordable housing? into affordable housing?
Well, of course, this is an ongoing process, but already at this stage, we are seeing ad hoc land, because you have some significant land holdings, and gradually, we're producing lists of what may be potentially usable. We have operational buildings that you no longer use, and there will also be other buildings that you can turn to to look at as time goes by. I mean, this is very much a work in progress. I don't necessarily use this building as an example for 100% affordable housing or anything like that, so please don't think I am necessarily advocating that. But if you do fulfil, what I understand to be our ambitions to potentially relocate, then clearly, housing use of this building. So, you know, there will be operational buildings as well, so there's a number of opportunities that will be coming forward. It's very much work in progress, as I say, and it is, you know, something that members will need to take a view on, as I said earlier, whether they're prepared to develop on those or not.
Thank you. Stephen.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Chairman. I think any additional provision of affordable housing has got to be very welcome, and we've really got to welcome a policy that helps to provide that, particularly in a situation where the government is actually doing its best to prevent affordable housing through its planning requirements. The requirement of the permitted development of conversion of offices to flats without affordable housing is one example. The removal of the requirement for affordable housing on sites with below, with less than 10 houses is another one, and the viability rules all mitigate against the provision of affordable housing. And anything we can do to rebalance that would be really helpful. But my questions really are about timing. Currently, Mull Valley is discussing its local plan, and the intention is to publish in six or eight months, six months' time, the draft plan. Now, Mull Valley being an authority with 75% green belt and area beyond the green belt is clearly struggling for sites, and there are county sites within Mull Valley. So the question really is, are there current negotiations and discussions going on as part of that local plan process, which might actually help to implement this policy as part of that local plan? And that's just an example, because I'm sure there are other examples in other districts. And the second one is a personal one in my ward, in my division, where I'm sure Colin is fully aware of the Dean Street Education Centre, which has had planning permission for housing development for over two years now, and still, nothing's happened on the ground. That was, that planning permission involved the minimum of affordable housing, if my recollection is correct, but it would be really good to actually see some progress on that. And I'm just wondering about the timing of all of this. But it's okay having, it's okay having policies, but it's the implementation of the policies that are the real concern.
I totally agree with you, a government policy you might be interested to understand. I think, you know, some of the things that have been put in place to do one thing have queered a pitch as far as affordable housing. So I totally agree with you on that. Deliverability, I think, is absolutely right, your Mull Valley, absolutely, we're having conversations with 10 of the 11 boroughs and districts, but actually, Mull Valley is very up for these conversations. We're going, sitting at the table with everything we've got in the area. The areas that have got planning permission, we're working with the boroughs and districts of Mull Valley as well to look at how we bring those forward. We've had a resource issue, as I said to Eba the other day, when he said about looking backwards, I said, I've got a crick in my neck, I can't look behind, I can only look forward, because there's enough work looking forward without looking back. So I know we've made some mistakes, I know we've got some resource issues that we need to deliver. And Julian, as I say, has been fantastic at setting these borough workshop up, which have been really everybody around the table, and getting health, and getting everyone there to try and to do that. And we're doing a lot more close working with the boroughs and districts on their local plans, and bring forward brownfield sites that are currently in use. And part of that is actually looking at our own estate. And when Richard made the point about the strategy that's in there, actually, it is, you know, we've got three, if you take schools out of the equation, we've got 300 operational sites. Actually, you know, it's great, if you look at neighbouring councils, neighbour county councils, and how many sites they have, you know, we're trying to get that down from 300 to 100. 100 is a lot compared to what some of the others have got. So actually, we need to narrow that down, we need to co-design our delivery of service locally, which is going to release a lot more sites. It's never going to happen fast, it's never going to happen overnight, because you've got to go through planning, get developers, get the money, sort it all out. But it is, you know, I would like to see, as we get through next year, that there is a lot more starting to happen on the ground, and there's a lot more evidence of that. But it won't be every site, but yes, the ones that you've got planning on, absolutely, I'm annoyed that they're not builders on site at the moment.
Thank you, Julian, you wanted to add?
Chair, yes, if I may, three very quick points. Firstly, absolutely, as councillor Kemp says, the purpose of those workshops is really to discuss the art of the possible in planning terms with the boroughs, to be clear where possible sites can come forward, and indeed, to understand their ambitions, there's some of their sights as well, so that's absolutely really important. I think the second thing that I would say is that this strategy, should you end up with it and agree it, will not be a short term horizon alone, you know, it won't just look at the first two or three years, it will look at a longer period, maybe 10 years, it could even arguably be longer. And of course, in that term, in that term, local plans will revise and be reviewed, and so, you know, things can change. I think it would be invidious of me not to mention, because there is a line in the slides about it, and while I recognise the sensitivity of this issue, I think I should just point out that you will face challenges in some of this, and some of this will be difficult, because, you know, if you're going to fulfil your ambitions, you can see the numbers in the slides, you know, you may need to look at further green belt release and some of those issues. And I think, while that is clearly a matter for you, it would be wrong of me not to point that out to you.
Thanks. That's better. I think you're right, I think we're all aware of some of the challenges that are ahead, particularly relating to green belt. And Andy, you wanted to bring a question.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. The thing about affordable housing, it's not really a Surrey issue, actually, apart from where Surrey's the landowner, because as Colin said, the rules are set by the borough councils and the local plan, and they apply to Surrey like they apply to everybody else. But the actual problem about social housing is that developers don't actually like social housing, they much prefer the shared ownership thing that you described, for the simple reason that they can get more money from that, from housing associations who normally take on the housing. So my question, I guess, is that we find that all the other developers actually come up with these viability arguments, you know, that we can't really afford affordable, the social rented, it's got to be shared ownership. And of course, shared ownership disappears from the affordable market once the owners bought it all. So we, as a responsible landowner, we should actually be encouraging the developers that we work with to not try to play this game. And we have some, and certainly in Farnham and Waverley, we've got some very important sites, you know, we've got a site in Farnham with 350 houses, and we've got another one with probably about nearly 100. And in Farnham, it's a development that we are involved with, the Brightwell's involved, but only on the commercial side. The developer there has claimed that they've got to change the affordable housing from half social, half shared ownership, to totally shared ownership, and they've got away with that. So my question to you is, I hope that we, as a responsible landowner, will take that attitude, that we won't try and allow our partners, developers, to play that game, because that is irresponsible, and we shouldn't be doing that. Thank you, Chairman.
And you're absolutely right, Andy, and that hits the nail on the head. You know, we're not deliverers, but what we are is enablers, because we have the land. And that's where we can have those conversations, and we've already done it in a couple of places. We want to tender to deliver on this site, this amount of affordable at this rate, and then this amount of retail to pay for it, come back and tell me the figures about delivering that. And that's, excuse me, and that's the work that's going on. So we are enablers in this, and that's part of the work we are doing.
Chair, just really endorsing what both speakers have said. I mean, it's not, I think, right to completely dismiss the challenges of viability, I have made that point in the presentation, but there is an element, of course, if they would say that, wouldn't they? So it is certainly an issue. I mean, this is the opportunity you have, in fact, so that you can contractually commit to doing either compliance schemes or above, and not acting as developer per se, but as acting as the enabler, and make sure that those games are not played. Of course, if you are able, either in partnership with the district and borough, or on your own, to attract subsidy from Homes England, of course, then that of itself eases the viability pressures, particularly in the context of the infrastructure that we talked about a little while ago. So, yes, I mean, I would be encouraging you to agree whatever level of affordable housing you choose, and to go for that. And your comments about shared ownership are entirely right. It has its place, it is not the panacea, and that's why you're looking at other things.
Thank you. Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman. Inevitably, when you're coming late in the questioning, some of the ground will already been covered, but I hope I try and avoid that. Obviously, some good work is being done behind the scenes, but the more, you know, more one thinks about it, there are so many imponderables here. You know, we know that the districts and boroughs are the principal deliverer through planning and through their other relationships, and that Surrey has a role to play. What I'm trying to focus in amongst all these uncertainties is, can we, in a sense, become a little bit clearer on maybe even having an ambition? We've just talked about enablers, and absolutely, Surrey is not a housing authority, but it may be enabling. And shouldn't we have some idea of what, how many units of affordable housing, however defined, this county will be responsible for? Rather than just having these discussions and working with the districts and boroughs, and perhaps something will come out, you know, I bear the scars of six years as a leader of South Ridge, talking to Surrey about all sorts of collaboration, of course, nothing ever happened. Now, maybe this is different, and that will be excellent, but, you know, the path is against you for all sorts of reasons. But focusing narrowly on to what this council can do, in its very narrow scope for its assets, can we not have perhaps a target, an ambition, how Surrey County Council in its manifestations will contribute to, I don't know, 200 affordable housing units every month, or whatever, whatever a reasonable figure is, rather than just a general aspiration that will be focused on one particular? And my secondary question, it will be just a question, is, although there's a slide on South Ridge, the limited liability partnership with Places for People, it's not featured in any of the discussions so far. What is there to say about this particular scheme, this particular relationship? Is it working? Is it off the ground? Is it delivering? I mean, it looks very good from the slides, but a little bit of extra detail on that specific might indeed help secure our long term ambition of what this council in and of itself can deliver as far as affordable housing is concerned.
Sorry, no good with technology. I think two things are worth saying in terms of your first point. The first is that I would encourage you to do exactly that, and certainly, when we get to the end of the strategy process, we will postulate, if that is the right word, a number that which you can achieve, we shall certainly know how many units we think you can achieve on the sites. I can't tell you that today, so please don't ask me, but we will know how many you can achieve on the sites, at least on the more easily deliverable ones, and probably on all of them. And as I said earlier, I think you do have choices here, you need to balance out your income requirements, together with your aspirations for affordable housing, and then you need to say what they are. Again, we can recommend to you, but ultimately, that will be members' choice. But I think it's absolutely vital that you do do that, and then you will be able to influence the agenda rather more strongly than if you do this on a site by site basis. So I think that's absolutely right, and I think you should do, and you may wish to make a recommendation at the end of this process to that effect. I'll let others comment on the progress and the speed, because I've not worked with it personally, but the joint venture that you have is with a highly reputable, well, originally a housing association, but they do very many more things now. I have, in other places, seen them both in operation and in bidding for similar projects. They contain and have significant resources and capacity to be able to do things, which, of course, is one of the advantages of such joint ventures in a world where people are going to be competing for development resources and abilities, particularly with, as I mentioned earlier, the release of, the raising of the housing revenue account borrowing cap, which will potentially mean that most local authorities are looking to develop new housing, resources are going to be a matter of some competition. So to have a partner who has that existing capacity and that skill, and indeed, let us not ignore its significant ability to invest, they are a very cash rich partner. And you are effectively on a joint venture with them whereby you will ultimately sell them land, they will bring working capital to it, and they will deliver out, frankly, whatever you want to do, dependent on the planning policy issues. So it is a strong approach, and one that is tried and tested across the country.
Briefly come back, very briefly, and before Colin speaks, the question is to Colin, because he may answer my question before I've even asked it, which is normally the case. But when Julian says it's up to members to decide this, I mean, I'm not making, you know, hopefully, a controversial point, in practice, it means the cabinet has got to make these kinds of decisions. So therefore, in Colin and in his current role, and in his, no doubt, his future role, the bias that the cabinet and the individual cabinet member has towards affordable housing or other areas is really very, very important. So it would be quite useful to hear from Colin at this point, whether his instinctive bias is indeed, when we have assets to divest, that affordable housing is a priority that he will press his cabinet colleagues to pursue.
Yeah, I was sort of going to say that, but yeah, it does draw me into it a little bit more. And absolutely, I mean, my driver since I was doing the role at a borough level is about, I spent a long time understanding social, affordable, how it all works, because it is very complicated in its delivery and understanding that. So you absolutely have my word that that will be my driver, key workers, because actually, you know, from a county point of view, and our social workers, and finding them places to work, as well as the blue light services and everything else, you know, that must be our driver in delivering forward and going forward with this. And, you know, Richard's point about the money is absolutely right, but we must find that balance. You know, if it's a case of bringing in 50 grands worth of revenue a year, and we can deliver those, load of those housing, or taking in 100 grand a year, but not delivering so many of them, I will take the 50 grand option, because actually, it is finding that balance between the financial and also doing what I morally believe is the right thing to do. So I absolutely buy into that. The JV and the decision making, what we will come forward with, all the work that's going on in the moment, I mean, the current work that's going on, I suppose, to be perfectly honest, in an ideal world, we would not do all of this, it would be a bit more controlled, but actually, we've got to react quickly. So there's lots of pieces of work going on together, the strategies, the boards, there's lots of pieces of work. By the time we get into the spring of next year, and we will bring forward for all members to see that strategy, and to talk about it, it will come back to this committee, it will be a general conversation, we've got a couple of members already involved in the advisory board and looking at all of that, we've got as much into it as we can at the moment to drive that, and they've got some strict timescales about when to actually give us some recommendations, because we need to start delivering. Even with that going on, we're still trying to get some other stuff which are quick wins and deliverable off the ground now. So there's so many different pieces of work, and we're trying really hard to do that. I'm going to make one extra point, if I may, Chair, and Julian's mentioned it twice, about the boroughs and districts and their HRA account. There are some restrictions on this. Now, the boroughs have been given, taken the lid off of this, and they can now borrow additional money for their housing revenue account to deliver social housing. The one issue with that, it ties it up with the right to buy, and some of the boroughs are making, are quite nervous about going down that, an investment route from an outside or an arm's length or whatever, is one question. The HRA situation is a... The HRA situation is a whole different one, where boroughs and districts are quite nervous about getting into that, because within 10 years, someone can come along and buy that, you know, so it's quite, it's quite a dangerous area, where what we're trying to do is build longevity into the system. So it is quite a balancing act, and I just wanted to put that little caveat in there.
Thank you, I think you make a really good point there, so it's something that's been concerning us with regard to the right-to-buy and the longevity of some of these housing projects, and I think that we are where we are because of the right-to-buy in previous years gone by. Peter.
Thank you, Chairman. Sorry, I've got a terrible cold, so if I'm struggling here. On page 42 of the report, of the today's report, it says, what is the process? And the first dot point is review of all councils' assets for optimum use. And I guess when I read that, I thought it would be very helpful to see what the criteria are that are being used for optimum use, because one person's view of optimum use may be very different from somebody else's view of optimum use, and I'm assuming there is a table somewhere of criteria that we're applying, and I thought it would be useful to see that, and ensure there was alignment at this stage of the process on the criteria, because once all the work's been done, it's then very difficult to go back and say, well, I don't agree on that particular classification or whatever. So that was one question. And sort of following on from that, and I think, you know, Colin mentioned this as well, is within that optimum use is implicit, I think, an economic trade-off. You know, we all want to see more affordable housing, but we recognise there may be an economic trade-off for that, and I think it would be quite useful and maybe helpful in the process to have some underlying assumptions on, you know, if we increase the affordable housing that our hearts tell us we want to do, what's the economic value that the county is foregoing, which our heads may be interested in hearing? And I think, you know, in my opinion, it's better to have that process earlier, you know, start that process earlier, rather than leave it too late in the process. So that was kind of one question. My second question really is, got quite a separate issue. As I talk to my residents, I think almost everybody you speak to would agree, we need more, A, we need more houses, and B, we need more affordable houses for our key workers. And then you run into, well, what about a significant development in my, in this location? And of course, all the local residents are then up in arms. And most of the arguments that they make against this location is typically in terms of the impact on infrastructure. It's our roads are already solid with traffic, our train carriages are already full with commuters, our schools are full, our, et cetera. So my question is, I understand, I'm not an expert on this, but I understand that some months ago, the government actually assigned a significant amount of money to help authorities that authorities could apply for, for significant infrastructure as a result of development that they proposed, and I just wondered if that was something that we were looking at and would consider.
Thank you. Just on the criteria first, if you could see my laptop as we speak, there is a draft set of criteria to do exactly that purpose. And again, you know, that will, those will ultimately be part of the strategy which you'll have to endorse at cabinet, as you say, but that's exactly right, you know. Where is the trade-off between income, jobs, housing? Because there is a trade-off, and there is a prioritisation point, and, you know, right back at the beginning of our discussions, you know, I said you're going to have to make that decision, and it's inevitable, and it's right. In terms of the trade-off, we are doing two things, and we're doing one thing, and then there's a second point to make. We are doing, as part of the development of this strategy, some socio-economic impact studies. They will be relatively high-level, so they will be able to give you some general thoughts on what the trade-off is in terms of affordable housing as opposed to income or as opposed to business space. So they are overviewing the strategy as a whole, and they will be able to look at the site-specific impacts of, say, for example, this building, you know, what happens if you, if you do move somewhere else, and, you know, what does it do to Kingston, what does it do to your new place, and vice versa. So we are on to that work. When you get down to the, you know, the levels of how much affordable housing on a particular site has the economic impact, I think there are two points to make. The first is that that is very site-specific, that will be determined by location, price points, connectivity, employment in the area, retail, all of those things. So that one, I think you have to do further down the road. I think the other point is that I think that is more an economic trade-off for you as the county council. At the end of the day, if you put 100 houses, and 70 of them are market and 30 are affordable, the reality is that that will make, the economic impact of the 100 houses will be less significant, will still be an input economic impact of 100 houses. Clearly, if you did 100% affordable, as opposed to a compliance scheme, then there will be some switch, but, you know, between 30 and 35 and 40, it'll be much more, more de minimis. I'll let Colin talk about the infrastructure fund and those bids, but in terms of the concerns about infrastructure, I mean, I think those are well-made, as I said earlier, you know, your infrastructure bill is significant. Big developments have clearly got to have their infrastructure issues built in and costed. Notwithstanding what Colin might say about the current approach, there is a definite need for a lobbying task to government to bid, to work with your LEPs, to work with your districts and boroughs, to get a coordinated and cohesive offer and requirement as to, if we have X number of houses, this is the infrastructure need, this is what we need to pay for it. And as I said earlier, you can't enable all that infrastructure simply through your estate. The lobbying is important, but that cohesive bidding process is really important, too.
As far as the bids and the housing infrastructure fund, which is the one you mentioned, and there are lots of others out there, yes, we're involved in all them conversations. I think the HIF bids, we've got, we put in a bid for six, expecting to get one, we were told we would get one to go through to the next round, we got four, which was really good news. We're now in the process of developing those other four. Part of the issue with that is, so if it's a 70, 80 million pound highway scheme, number one, it takes six or eight months to develop it, and number two, probably costs about half a million pound of revenue to deliver one scheme, and probably up from that a little bit, so there's quite a bit of juggling to understand the delivery and how we deliver that. But yes, we're absolutely involved in that, there's a major piece of work going on with the government on the major road networks, and that should release some money to develop those ones, we get them agreed, there's working with the LEPs, and we sit on both the LET boards and money for that. The unfortunate thing is, and also, you've got 106 and SEAL money to deliver infrastructure, the problem is, all of that money is assigned to delivering of houses. So you can't say, you can't deliver the houses because we need the infrastructure, because without delivering the houses, you're not going to get the money for the infrastructure. So it is that, find that balance, it is having that. We're developing with all the boroughs and districts local transport plans to understand what are the needs, we're working with the health partners to understand what they need locally, community groups, so there's lots of work to understand the local need, and then we've got to go out and find the money, and that will only come as we deliver houses, is releasing money, as I say, it starts at the boroughs and districts, with SEAL or 106, depending where the boroughs and districts are, but there are bigger schemes about major infrastructure as well. So, and there's pots of money, NHS England have got some money in their property issue as well, so there is pots of money out there, it's just unlocking it and finding ways to unlock it, and it's a constant battle and lots of talking, and getting people to deliver is really hard work. I'm going to come back on one point, and John made, about the vision and the recommendations, and I make the point again that I made earlier on, be careful on the recommendations on your vision, because I totally agree with you, we need a vision, but make your vision not just about numbers, about having a key driver to deliver truly affordable, rather than just deliver 400 units or 4,000 units of what it is. So a balanced approach to that will be really useful, thank you.
Thank you, Colin. We've got two more speakers, and then I want to try and draw this to a closure, so Paul.
Thank you, Chairman. Just to roll back a little bit on the property, because you mentioned earlier, Julian, that the, about this county hall, and for the benefit of the people that, in the unlikely event that anybody's watching the webcast, or certainly anyone who watches the recording later on my Facebook page, we were talking about affordable housing, which we were all agreed we completely support, but this county hall is not in Surrey. And I don't mean to sound totally mercenary, but I would like to see, as that this is not in Surrey, if it was made into affordable housing, it's not going to benefit Surrey residents, I would suggest. I'd like to see it absolute maximum. I'm no property expert, I don't know anything about property, but I would want to see us maximise what we can get out of this, out of this council hall. I'm amazed we're still in it, I can't believe we didn't move out of it years ago, quite frankly, but anyway. Sorry? Anyway.
Chair, thank you. Just a couple of points. First of all, I mean, I think with this building, as with any other, you have choices. Those choices will, of course, be constrained to some extent by the planning requirements of Kingston. But you'll recall, I did say that I wasn't necessarily advocating this as a, as a major affordable housing site. But yes, I mean, logic would say that within the constraints, because of the nature of this building, you should try and maximise the value. That is not necessarily saying that you shouldn't or wouldn't be providing any affordable housing along the way. But yeah, no, I mean, I think that's an entirely legitimate position to take.
Political answer to that? Yes, absolutely, we will try and find the best way forward to maximise what we can do with this, and the best way, most we can get out of it for the future, and probably leave someone else the problem of delivering affordable housing on it, while we concentrate on Surrey.
Thank you. Barbara.
Do we have a list of the assets, or will we be sent a list for our divisions? Would be, sorry? Of what? I've been saying that.
There was a project, there was a project while Tim Oliver had this portfolio, that a list went out to all members to divulge some of the stuff within their boroughs and districts, to get some clarity around it, and it wasn't absolutely everything, because there's council buildings, you know, there's operational buildings and some other bits, and it was about non-operational, I believe, and I didn't focus on that. But actually, yeah, I mean, we're in the process of actually pulling our property list together, so there will be operational, non-operational, scrubby bits of land that we're never ever going to do anything with, and probably too small to build anything on, pull them to one side, there's stuff that is not going to deliver anything, so can we just sell it? So there are, we're trying to make separate lists of it all, and the intention is definitely to engage with a local member to fully understand what's in the local, and what's deliverable locally, and it's that sort of borough level, and also at a county level from the county members. So talking to boroughs and districts about what's deliverable and what's politically acceptable with the political leadership at the borough, but also talking to the local county member for them to understand, and them to help us understand, what's in the local areas as well. So that will be an ongoing piece of work.
Sorry, can I just add to the extent that, sorry, that I've got the list, I've been back, I've checked, I've spoken to the officers, and God bless them, they have so much on their plate, that I'm pushing it, and I've got quite a lot on my plate, so it's taking a little bit of time, but we haven't made any further headway on actually discussing and trying to say what, and I've got three or four pieces of land which, where I'm asking questions and saying, how do we take this forward? But there doesn't appear to be the officers able to have the time to be able to take it forward, and I just wanted the cabinet member to know this, so that he understands where the problem now lies.
And all the member feedback we got has been put into the central pot, and there is a lot of work going, but you're quite right on resource, and we're trying to address that and get that forward, which is why people like Julian and that are working with us to bring this together, and some other people as well. But there is absolutely a piece of work to divulge that, that's a lot about what the advisory panel are doing to do that work, what the two members are involved with, so there are lots of pieces of work to pull this together. And as I said once already, ideally, this is not the best way to do it, there'd be a more structured approach, but time is our enemy, and we need to deliver. So actually, we've got lots of bits going on to get this sorted as fast as we possibly can. And hopefully, by the early part of next year, some more of that will emerge.
I think Barbara Thompson wants to come back on one small point of that, I'm allowing her, because she obviously didn't read the other notes about the land.
I just wanted to mention, I mention this all the time, in my division, I have no family services at all, so in all this that you're working out, if you could get us a hub or somewhere, just, I know, Colin, I can read your mind.
And I totally agree with you, and, but the question is, how are we going to deliver the service? We must not get, if, and we are looking at where are the key areas of deprivation, or whatever, whatever the key, the key words, and, yep, and there are areas that haven't got a building, that do need a building in, because actually, the two or three buildings we have got in some areas are in the wrong place. So that piece of work is going on to understand from the services where we need to deliver the services, and then we'll look at where the buildings are. And we may end up with an area, and my own area is one of the same, where there are five buildings, actually, the two areas of deprivation is only two, and they need to be there, and all the other work can be outreach work, and we can be in where are small areas within a, you know, we've all got the areas of our borough where there are, 80% of it is really nice, but there are small pockets. Actually, you don't need a building to serve them people, you need people to go in there and deal with it from a central location. So we are, Barbara, I know your area, and I know it well, and that is definitely in the, yeah.
Barbara, can we do this through the chair? And you asked me, and I said no, so I'm sorry. Then speak to him outside the meeting. Thank you.
Chair, as you're drawing this to close, I did remissly not make any comment on the right-to-buy point earlier, and I just wanted to leave you just a thought on that. This is a housing professional's comment and not a political comment, but you're quite right, a part of the reason we are where we are is because of the right-to-buy, and I just thought it was worth drawing to your attention two things. First of all, is that within the housing profession, and indeed, local government generally, lobbying continues on the right-to-buy, both in terms of the use of capital receipts, on which there is currently a consultation paper, and also on potentially making the right-to-buy less attractive. So it is worth bearing in mind that, notwithstanding the right-to-buy, the pursuit of affordable housing is still a good thing. There are, of course, conceivable circumstances in which everyone in this room will be aware, in which the rules on right-to-buy might change quite sharply.
Thank you. Just one last question, we've spoken about the infrastructure and obviously the lack of an infrastructure in certain areas. I hear nothing being developed, and I'm hoping you're going to tell me it's part of your strategy, with regard to extra care housing, because we have a number of people that are getting older, they are costing the community with regard to NHS care, and if we can actually centralise some of that cost and maximise some of the housing in that area, we actually might be able to be reduced cost and actually free up land and other property elsewhere. So is that built into the programme?
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, delivery of extra care is absolutely part of our strategy going forward, and we've had a couple of hiccups with some of the partners we've been working with, we need to smooth that out and actually, you know, start delivering this, but absolutely, that is part of our strategy, to understand that, you know, and it's not just extra care, it's extra care on elderly, it's learning disabilities, it's send, it's all of those things, and all of those strategies have been pulled together to focus what we've got and how we need to deliver it.
Thank you very much, and thank you, everyone, for taking part, and Barbara being restrained to allow me to not, we're going to have a short break for three minutes, whilst we pull the recommendations together.
Find out who the two councillors are on the panel, please, because that's what I asked about at the beginning, and I asked that maybe I could go on it, but I kind of got the impression that they've already been selected, and are they members of this committee who is going to do the scrutiny?
It is, the two members are Edward Hawkins and Nick...
Was it Sonny?
Derby, yeah, that's right, are the two members that are on the panel, but absolutely, once their work starts, it's being privately chaired by Robert Napier, I've written his name down, there are a couple of independent people on it... I've written his name down, there are a couple of independent people on it, there's a couple of councillors on it, independent and also conservative, so it's across the board to fully understand that. They were chosen because of their, because of their knowledge of the housing, and because they were reasonably up to speed. But absolutely, this committee should, in the early part of next year, to look at the work they're doing, I think will be an excellent idea.
I would also welcome the opportunity of having a willing volunteer on that committee, should it be enabled.
I'll take that out of, I'll take that out of the meeting and look into that, Chair.
Thank you. We'll have a three-minute break whilst we pull together the recommendations. Paul.
I thought I'd read in the report that the chairman of this committee is on there, or did I misread that? No? Okay.
Now, please. And we, the first recommendation is before you, it's quite busy, so I hope you can all read it, as I'm struggling. So that is the first recommendation from this select committee, and then the second recommendation.
Chair, may I make a brief clarification on that?
Okay.
If you would use the words 'attempt to meet demand' or 'to contribute to meeting demand', I think that would be entirely comfortable. I wouldn't want to leave you with the impression that the county council's assets will meet the complete level of demand in Surrey.
Everyone happy with that amendment? Paul.
I assume we'll get to look at that plan and scrutinise it, or do we do, or does that happen after?
We do, yeah. That plan will come back to this committee.
Good enough, thank you.
Your mic's on, are you going to... No, that's a fair point. So those are the recommendations from this select committee that will go forward. Thank you very much indeed for a very lively debate, and a very interesting debate, and thank you for attending. I take it you'll stand behind Colin, because I'd... Well, we do like a willing target. So the next item is item seven, and we have Paul Whedon, Lucy Monnet, Colin Kemp again, and we've got a surprise guest, which is Jason Russell. Thank you. Rather than, I mean, this item is a very important item for this select committee, because I think it's one area that we can really get our teeth into. I don't propose to, for us to go through the slides, because I think we had an experience of the PowerPoint presentation last time, so all the members here actually would have read the slides that you provided and the backup material, so we'll go straight into questions and debate. And I see we have the first question on the horizon, is Barbara? And before that, actually, Paul, yeah.
So sorry, so sorry. Yeah, 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 so sorry. So just to update members on, last, our last meeting, I raised an issue about communication, and how our Works Communication Team give us advance notice of works, which, I have to say, while it may have seemed I was being critical, it wasn't meant that way at all. In fact, the communication that we get is very good, but it can be, particularly to a newer member like myself, when you couple that with the enormous amount of email that we all get, some of it relevant to what we do and a lot of it not, it just adds to the confusion when you may get one, two, or three possibly emails about the same thing, each email giving slightly different information. So the officer, to be fair, from the Works Communication Team that was here last, invited me to Mero Depot, and Colin as well, and we had that meeting yesterday, and it was very productive, I'm sure Colin will agree. And we agreed that they would go away and look at how they communicate with us, so that we can then pass that information out through to residents that we represent, whether that be on email, on Facebook, or whatever social network, just to really maximise the reach and effectiveness of those communications. And they're working on, I won't go into the full details of that now, because I don't think it's really appropriate, but I think we will see very soon some communication from the Works Team to tell us how they're going to do that. But they did take on board everything we said, didn't they, Colin? And didn't take it as criticism, they took it as constructive feedback, and I came away feeling very positive from that meeting, so just thought I'd update you all on that, and I'm sure you'll all hear more about that very soon. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for that, Paul, because I think it's vital that we get the messages out to the members of the public, because they're our residents, they're the people that are investing their time and energies and finances into this area. So moving on to the first question, Barbara.
Can I just clarify? When, when there's a traffic accident or something, and our street furniture is damaged, okay, is, am I correct in thinking that KIR goes out straight away, fixes it, and that's in their contract to do? Am I understanding it, is what I'm saying? And then where does the money go, if it's an insurance claim? So where does that money go? Does that go to KIR, so that being, they've got two lots of money? Or am I not understanding it correctly?
Right, part of their, part of their...
I was just going to say, because in my division, again, I have a whole rail, railing, set of railings which was badly damaged over a year ago, I mean, seriously damaged. And when I reported it, they had no idea that it was in fact an insurance claim, so I was sort of, I'm a bit confused with the whole process. Can you clarify?
Is the system perfect? No. But actually, you're right, and you're, so their first role is to go out and make it safe, not to fix it, to go out and make it safe. So if you've got bits of metal hanging around and all the rest of it, then the team will do an assessment, we will, the insurance claim will automatically take place about trying to get the money back from the car accident and whatever. Alongside of that, the team will make an assessment about, is this something which definitely needs to be there? If it's a traffic light, or a street light, or something like that, then we would, that repair would automatically be programmed to be done while the insurance claim's going on. If it's just an adverse sign that's for frogs crossing the road or something, we wouldn't necessarily spend the money, we'd go and get the money first and then spend. And I think that, does that sort of cover it, Lucy? Do you may want to...
Yes, so there's a kind of a difference depending on what's happened. So obviously, if it's a traffic signal that's been wiped out, then obviously we need to respond to that quickly. And some of the smaller type incidences, there's a question of, are we aware of it, which is, you've just pointed out, which can sometimes be a challenge, but also the contractor batching up elements of work in order to be able to deliver it as a bigger programme and get more efficiencies. But as Colin said, there perhaps are some things that slip through the net, so we'd need to take that away and find out for you separately on your specific item. In terms of the money, coming back to us, for the larger type incidences, the money comes back to the authority. We ask KIR to chase down that money where we can, where we can secure it from other people's insurance companies. It's not that straightforward, it's not, we have to prove, provide certain amounts of evidence to do that, but we certainly endeavour to do that, to recover that money, and that would come back to us. On some of the smaller type works, under a certain, much lower value, we have a slightly different arrangement where we, where that's covered within the cost, but KIR aren't getting sort of double paid for the, for the large amounts of recovery.
That, we've discussed this item earlier, because we are aware that £198,000 came back into Surrey, but we were concerned that we were paying twice for the same repair, so Surrey were paying for that repair as part of the contract, and then instead of the money coming straight away back into refund Surrey, it was actually going straight back into KIR, and actually refunding KIR, and we were only getting the overspill money at the end of the financial year. And that's something perhaps you might want to take away from this meeting, and send us an email to actually reassure us that that is not taking place.
Yeah, I will do. I'm not, I'm not aware of the facts that you're talking about there, so I'll need to take that away and find out, and obviously come back to you.
Thank you very much. We've all read the current contract, which, if I'm not mistaken, we appear to have received value for money on the old contract arrangements, as outlined in certainly point four in the papers. Has anything changed that would actually make the current contract not value for money?
My gut reaction is, and while Lucy's thinking about that, is all the bits we've done to, on tweaks on the contract side of it, have also been around getting better value for money. Where we've had the financial issues over the time of the contract, we've gone back and renegotiated to get better things out of it, either outcomes or financial benefit out of it, and get them tightened down as much as possible. So there will be a positive impact. I don't know of anything that would have a negative impact. All the little changes and quirks that have gone on are to generate a positive impact. Does that cover it?
Yeah, Chair, just repeating what you just said. I think your question is, is there more opportunities to get more value out of the current contract?
The current contract in the papers says it's value for money, and we're always trying to achieve more for less. Has anything changed to make the current contract... Has anything changed to make the current contract unattractive? Or are we just trying to tweak the current contract to actually make it more efficient and more cost effective for Surrey?
So we're certainly always trying to do the latter. New innovations or just new ways of doing things or just streamlining our own processes will help us achieve that. But it's perhaps small margins in terms of making any significant savings, but that's still worth doing. But yeah, it's on the smaller marginal scale.
Okay, are we, the next question's from Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman. It follows, I think, from the, excuse me, the discussion you've just had. And this refers to paragraph twenty five, twenty six and twenty seven of the report, a very good report, I might add, where it seems to be you're talking in the past and you're talking about the present, you're talking about the future. And it's, I want just a bit of clarity of twenty five. It says the council has more recently contracted a value for money assessment on highways contract facilitated by proving services. And it says what it's covered, it says results can then be used as a baseline to determine focus of area. Twenty six, as it goes, as the VFM assessment has been completed for a number of highways authorities, the scores can be used to gauge our position against others. And twenty seven, this work is currently ongoing to review the outputs of the assessment along with next steps and can be shared with the task and finish group. So that sounds to me as if this value for money, which was recently, presumably in the last few weeks, months, I don't know, we need clarity on that. Some of the results are out and appear to put us in a relatively good position, but other stuff is coming out later and may be shared with the committee or the task group. So where actually are we with the VFM provided by, facilitated by proving services? In other words, is there more you can say about where we are and the future than that which is contained in three short paragraphs?
Yes, just expand on that a little bit. This is activities that are happening over the last few weeks, so it is very recent. It primarily, we went into it, it looks at very broadly how the contract is performing. So the value for money part of it is perhaps a slightly misleading. Overall, you're looking at the whole value of the whole contract, but it's not looking at the specific individual rates, for example. So it doesn't go into that level of detail. And so it's happened recently over a few weeks. We, we consider the different activities and how we operate and relate to our partners and how that then translates into, you know, are we delivering a services that would be considered as good or providing value? So as I said, they've done that in a number of authorities, so we can compare our, our kind of initial results with others. And that came out very positively, largely because we have been continuously looking to see where we can improve things and work better together to deliver those efficiencies. So that's a positive for us. We are, the next step of that is to see what more then can we take and looking at what other authorities have done to transform ourselves further or get greater value. So that might be looking at where we could do more around income or where we could do some perhaps smaller scale changes. But for us, because our scores are so favourable, there are perhaps more opportunities about looking at bigger transformation. But that work is yet to kind of really kick off.
No, thank you. That's a very helpful answer. It's obviously work in progress, but coming as it is now, it's not a trivial piece of work, otherwise you wouldn't have commissioned it. When, I think this committee, not, not, we stand in the task and finish group, which will be very interested in it, but also I think all members of the committee and indeed all members of the council will be interested, given that there is a degree of comparison with other authorities and it's looking forward. So I'm, you know, I don't want to press you too much, but I will. When do you think you'll be able to share some of the concrete results from the value for money or whatever term you like to use it with us as a committee and with our colleagues? This is really quite an important issue, isn't it?
Well, subject to just checking any confidentiality with any of the other authority people who are also included, we can share with you straight away some outline graphs and scoring of the different categories. So we can certainly share that with you now, that's not a problem.
Thank you. Stephen.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I was looking at the KPIs on page eighty nine and ninety. I think the worrying one, of course, and it's been a worrying one ever since I've been a member of this authority, is the one right at the bottom, the percentage of customers satisfied with highways in the resident survey. That's 29% here, right across the board. And I assume that that's been pretty regular over a relative period of time. But what interested me was that over the page, when we have the percentage customers satisfied in the customer panel survey, that goes up to 70%. Now, I wonder, Chairman, if there's an explanation of that difference between the resident survey and the panel survey? And if anyone's done an analysis of that? And also, I mean, the general question, if anyone's actually done an analysis of how, of how you might address the problem relating to customer service? I think it's, it's an important one.
I'll answer that first from what I've seen and the work I've done with the team going forward. And I think the answer is your, is in your inbox. How many people write to you and say, what a wonderful job? And how many people write to you and complain? The people who respond to the, to the general consultation and the feedback we get tend to be the people that have had an issue to go on. But actually, the panel work that was set up and set up by this committee in its previous engage with, is more engaged with the whole process and going forward and looks at, they, they're more involved in the whole process. And so they're there to give all the feedback and not, and not necessarily just the people that want to respond. And I think that's where you get the discrepancies within the responses. That's what I, I mean, that's the way I've always looked at it. And the questions I've asked on the same thing is because, and as I say, our inboxes are the answer to that, I think, because that's the feedback.
Yeah, just to add to that, the two, we've included quite a number of measures of customer satisfaction, as you can see, because obviously recognise how important it is. The, the three C, talking about the Surrey resident survey, so this is the results that are taken from the whole of the county council's resident survey, but specifically focused on highways. So that's a very broad kind of, if you like, population of people who are answering that questions. And the difference of the three D, which is the customer panel survey, this is a specific highways customer panel survey. So what we've done over the years is create a panel of our customers and they've come from perhaps people who are more interested or have complained to us. We've invited them to join our, our panel. So there are a smaller group of individuals who are maybe more informed or maybe more engaged in the highways customer experience and take their feedback. So that's the two difference in the, in the population and the scores. You're right to point out that our customer satisfaction scores on highways is low and traditionally and historically low, and that's not unique to Surrey. It's always a challenge in a highways environment to, to do anything significant in terms of improving that. What we have found in previous years is where we spend lots more money and have lots more campaigns highlighting, for example, in Horizon, we make some improvements on our customer satisfaction scores. I'm not surprised this year that they would have dropped, given the severe weather and the impact on our network and the experience lots of our residents had with potholes and and other impacts that, that damage did. So it goes up and down, but it does, it does kind of unfortunately for us, hunker around a low base point. And we try to manage that as best as we can, but it is a, a kind of an ongoing challenge of ours, if you like.
Thank you. And you want to add something, though, Jason?
Yeah, just, just a couple of things. You'll see the, the three B as well, which makes reference to this thing called the NHT survey. So this is the National Highways and Transport Survey that we participate in, along with, I think it's something like a hundred of the 153 highway authorities in, in England also participate. And when you look at what's coming in, certainly satisfaction with road condition is the lowest rated council service of every single local authority in the country. So generally speaking, we're, we're not unique in that being quite low. Our scores compared to others on NHT, I think we've, we've been very low, we're getting more up towards the, the middle now. So we have seen improvements probably coming from things like Horizon, some of the profile that we've actually had. One of the things we have seen though, and Ipsos Mori do the kind of the assessment of, of the NHT data that comes back. And one of the insights they've given us is that where people understand what we do, then generally they are more satisfied than those that don't. And my suspicion here would be, given the involvement the customer panel have, they will have a greater awareness. And that probably does explain some of the difference in the scores, I suspect.
I, I think you, you raise a very interesting point. But if you look at page ninety three of the report with regard to customer satisfaction measures, you've got Kent setting a target of 75 and achieving 76, but we're, we're only looking at, well, anything between 40 to 60. And we start off there, 50% target on Plan Works, and we're achieving 61.3. But then when you go down and you look at satisfaction with highways in Surrey from a resident survey, we're only achieving 29 against a target of 40. And yet, our nearest directly measurable authority being Kent is actually aiming for a much bigger performance. And I wonder if you can explain why, why we think we're less prepared and capable than Kent?
I think we just need to explore what they're measuring there. I'm not sure we're comparing like for like. We set targets that we think are realistic against the surveys because of our previous experience. I'm not sure the Kent satisfaction measure isn't a measure of how quickly people are responding to inquiries, for example, or instead of actually the overall satisfaction. So I'd need to take that away and clarify what we're looking at, whether they're comparable there.
Sorry, they're figures that you've produced for us to compare you against. So I would have thought you would have done that research beforehand.
I know that Kent don't participate in the NHT survey anymore, they used to. When they did, I think they were amongst the lowest in terms of resident satisfaction with road condition. They, they run their own survey and they have done for a number of years. And I think when you try and compare what they get to us, they're not, you know, their levels of satisfaction are, are much lower. As Lucy says, I, I suspect that's a measure of a particular component of public satisfaction rather than what we're trying to measure, which is just generally understand how satisfied people are with the service.
And can you confirm, I see that Kent are using a hundred calls as a, a survey slice. Can you tell us how many residents' responses you're using as a, as a slice? So in other words, what is customer participation rate?
No, we don't use a slice because I don't agree with that. But I know we use everything that comes in because I think that's the right way to measure it. But I don't, I'm trying to think how many, I need to get a report on what the numbers are.
Well, the customer, the, we, I don't have all that information to hand, I apologise for that. If you took three D, so the customer panel survey, for example, I think there's 1,600 people who sit on that customer panel. So that's a measure taken from that sample there. I'd need to check on the others, what the volume is.
Okay, thank you. Andy.
Thank you, Chairman. I received a email from a resident a few days ago expressing some concern about Kier. This is somebody who keeps a close eye on the stock market. And I had a look at it myself and Kier seemed to be in some financial difficulty. In the last week or so, their share price has dropped by about 40%. And they're the company that's being top of the list and being short, short sold in the stock market. And my question, I guess, is, and they're also reputed to be the company whose business model is closest to Corillian. And this whole sector's under pressure anyway. Do you say, have you any concern about this? This is going to cause them to have a lot of, spending a lot of time looking at themselves and managing themselves? Have you any concern about this might have an impact on the service to Surrey?
I think it's fair to say that since the issue with Corillian, like you say, the whole sector has been impacted on. And I think the, the confidence that shareholders have in the business has been impacted on. Kier's business model is quite different to Corillian's. And the, the debts that exist in them is largely from the investments they make, which for them is a big source of income. However, I know that having to go through a bit of a restructuring of the company at the moment to remove that debt to keep the shareholders happy, so that, that process they're going through. Through procurement, though, we do closely monitor the, the companies that we, we work with. And certainly that monitoring that they do at this stage hasn't thrown up real concerns for us, but we will continue to monitor. So the impact of Corillian has been quite significant across the whole sector.
Thank you. Richard.
Thank you, Chairman. Just picking up on that Kent point, I noticed that they don't even have KPIs in the Kent report. So I have a sneaking feeling that Kent is playing smoke and mirrors while we want to be honest and straight. Is that not so? Right. My question now is, and you've touched on it by the last question, there is the marketplace. What is the marketplace like for companies to repair our roads? Because really basically this report is saying, we've got to look at whether or not we want to continue with Kier and what are the alternatives out there as well? And I was going to ask you that question. What are, how many choices do we have there? And in a sense, comparing us with other counties and like for like could be comparing a low grade fruit, which is right across the marketplace. So comparisons with other counties doesn't necessarily mean that are we really getting good service? And possibly a more commercial area needs to be looked at, possibly? Because we've heard often people say, oh, once they hear it's the county council, they either double the price or the, or their job goes down, et cetera. So what I'm really asking is, I think that we've done a good job with Kier. I think they've done a good job. And it has vastly improved in the 10 years that I've been here. And there's no doubt at all about that. And I think a lot of that goes to Jason Russell for the work that he's done. However, I'm really asking to Jason and to others, what's your marketplace like? What are your choices? And are you comfortable with them? Thank you.
So everybody's looking at me? So... Absolutely, absolutely. Just forget him, yeah. Well, as we, as we stand at the moment, we have a lot of people who are interested in being Surrey's contractor, so... No, a good, well, we've been approached by a good half a dozen so far and there's, you know, there's, there's more suppliers out there. Largely, obviously, how attractive we'll be to the market will depend on what contract strategy we put forward. And so there are pros and cons in, in each way, which is why we need to explore that a little bit further. But, but the indication so far is that everybody's got a, a very healthy interest in us. They say that they like the idea of Surrey as a client, maybe because of some of the work we've achieved on our current contract as a, operating in a partnering way, looking at improvements, working collaborative. So we both achieve and get benefits out of it rather than it being rather antagonistic or unhelpful. So we feel like we're starting from a good place. So our choices feel at the moment good. We obviously do need to bear in mind other people going out to market at the same time as us and whether they're more appealing. As I said, much will come down to those conversations and the kind of review of what other people are doing. And also just talking to the market, which we've already started to do about, look, this, you know, we're thinking about this now, what would appeal? And, and so we can get that information from the marketplace as well as identifying our own needs, so we can tally the two up and come up with the best option.
Are Kier one of the people interested in renewing the contract?
Yes, they are.
Thank you. Peter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of questions, please. The first one, a sort of a general one on the lump sum arrangements we have, for example, on, on potholes, which I can see have attractions maybe for both parties in that... on potholes, which I can see have attractions maybe for both parties in that it removes, it basically takes the risk of peaks and troughs away from Surrey. However, it puts that risk on to the contractor. But it may also be beneficial because the contractor then has got a definite level of work that they can plan for too. But my question, though, is, in terms of the controls around that, who is it who makes the assessment of whether the pothole meets the criteria for being repaired or not? Because I can see that if I had a lump sum contract and I was maybe spending a bit more than the lump sum was giving me in that particular period, I might be tempted to say that pothole doesn't quite meet the criteria. So it was just a question about the controls around that. And my second question, a much more general question, is, as we think about, you know, the next contract, are we talking to Kia and indeed to other potential bidders for this? Asking them the question, rather than going out saying, here's what we want you to bid against because this is what we want? Are we asking them the question, are there things that we could change in that bid structure that would be financially attractive to you and where we can share some of the benefits? Because I think usually in these kind of negotiations, there are some win-win scenarios. You know, what's good for the contractor may also be good for us if we can both share the benefits. So are we having that kind of, are we proposing to have that kind of dialogue?
Thank you.
Yep. So the first answer, the lump, on the basis of the lump sum, the very vast majority of the defects that are identified are identified by Surrey staff. So it's, there's a small percentage which the contractor does. These are ones that kind of go through the website. They're already categorised by a system that we both agreed, which meets our intervention. So it's very minimal, but even still, that still has our own kind of intervention applied. So we are, in a sense, identifying those defects, the Surrey County Council. Yes, absolutely. To the second part of your question, that's part of the market research, which is very important. As I said, we want to have a good offer on the table so we can get the best deal and the best supplier who we can have a good working relationship with for what will be quite a duration if current experience has anything to go by. So we need to make the best of that. So absolutely, those upfront conversations, what would make this a better deal for you and us? What do we need to do? And what are we after? How does that all fit together? That's certainly part of the conversations.
Can I just add to that as well? You mentioned about the state of the marketplace. I think what we're seeing, again, probably partly an impact of Corillian, is that the providers now are much choosier about which contracts they go for than they were last time we went out. And so we've got to make sure we're attractive to the market. And our experience of this is being attractive to the market isn't just simply about how profitable the work is, it's about how organised they perceive us to be as a client. So how much can we give them a clear pipeline of activity? Are we going to be flaky and change our minds constantly? You know, it's those kind of things that they're making judgements on. And I think we're in a good position because we are well perceived. We look at other authorities that are going out at the same time as us because obviously that's the ones we're competing with largely. And we've got organisations like Transport for London. Now, they spend a lot more than we do, but they're perceived quite badly in the market because of the way they operate. So, you know, those kind of things. And as you say, having the conversations with potential providers to say, right, how can we set this up in a way that's going to be most attractive and therefore you can give us the best possible value out of this is going to be really important.
Well, I think you're right, Jason. I think it doesn't only come down to the best possible value, it's a balanced scorecard, isn't it? It's best possible value and best possible performance. And I think that looking at the KPIs that were produced, I think, I like reassurance from you guys that this committee will receive KPIs on a regular basis, that we can actually monitor the contract performance and making sure that the residents are getting value for money.
I mean, that's certainly what, that's what we'd like, absolutely. We, you know, we welcome scrutiny. I think it's always been very effective in the past in helping us address and improve issues. So we'd absolutely welcome that going forwards.
Thank you. Paul?
Thank you, Chairman. Question for Colin, really. The perception is that because we're a public body and it's not our money, that perhaps we don't necessarily get the best value for money from our contractors. I'm not close to this as you are. You, as the Highways Cabinet member, are close to this day in, day out. I'd like to hear from you whether you think that we're getting good value for money. When we had the pothole situation last year, went out with a crew, and actually, to a layperson, I couldn't believe what actually goes into repairing a pothole. It's not as simple as you might think. The equipment that they need, the personal protection equipment, the number of people, the vehicles, you know, and all the rest of it, it's not that straightforward. And I think also, just to add on to that, I think we need to do a better job of actually publicising what is involved. Because I think that would help with the perception of, oh, how hard can it be just to lob in a bit of tar into a hole? There's far more to it than that. And I think that we need to do more work around that. But the main question is value for money. Are we getting value for money, do you think?
Having now been doing this for 18 months and working with Kia, absolutely. I feel the way they respond to members' and residents' concerns and adjust their approach to suit. I mean, with the amount of work they do on the road, there's always going to be the odd hiccup, the errors and bits and pieces that go on. On the whole, their response, the value for money, the approach, the desire to do better on the customer service and to improve, the desire to assist with communications and go out to help to deliver this, to change impressions, absolutely. I mean, I've put a lot of them challenges on the table over the last 18 months. And one of the things I said to them earlier on, you know, there's a contract coming up in 2021. Do not come to me in 2021 with a load of new ideas. I want to see them on the ground now. Show me what you're doing in R&amp;D. Let's go out there and start to explain to people how this works. And they've been great in doing that. It's been a challenge because actually, we needed some of our own communications I needed to get right first. I've done a lot of work around that, as you know, and I know you've given me a lot of assistance with that, Paul. And I think you're right, you know, I've done some videos and been out with teams around looking at all the different types of thermal patching and the other types of patching that's done. And I'm trying to get some time to put them out there because I think you're absolutely right about that communication. So answer to both the questions is absolutely on the first one, I, you know, they're a really engaging team and want to help, you know, at all levels of the organisation, not just the senior management that have got to report to their shareholders, the guys on the ground. Bernard, who was in front of you last time, I mean, he's a really switched-on guy and will bring his teams around him to deliver what we want and help to deliver that. They've got financial pressures, they've got to answer to share boards and whatever. But actually, you know, they're really a good, it's a good, the atmosphere at Merrow and the team-working approach and having them in the same building, you know, walking backwards and forwards, having the conversations, open door, is really good. And, yeah, absolutely. And the communications, I agree, and we need to do more of that, you know. I think we've been, and I think we said yesterday when we were in the meeting, you know, we'd done stage one on getting our communications a lot better, and they are a good team, very reactive and a lot of the work they've done. And I think this is now the stage two about what's next and how do we develop that further, which your input and your comments at the beginning is really useful and we'll continue that. And I've already roped you in to do a bit more of that.
Thank you. I have to say, Colin, the videos that you produced, a bit of a trailblazer, really, because I see everyone jumping on the bandwagon now. I have to say, switching on my PC and seeing you staring out, it's quite a worrying trend. But it's a very effective and positive way of communicating, and I applaud you for that. Stephen?
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to follow on the discussion about the available market, in a sense. If I remember rightly, last time we went out to contract, there were a very limited number of companies that either could or were able to bid. I think there were six or seven, and two of those are no longer with us for whatever, for a number of reasons. And I just wondered if there was any thought of being given to an in-house bid for this contract? And if not, why not?
One of you must be unhappy.
So we've got some rain, so I was going... I mean, I recall last time, I mean, we did get a healthy number of return. I think, I mean, I'm fairly satisfied that the situation hasn't changed. As I said, we're certainly being approached, and that feels, you know, like a good place to start. In terms of internally, I think we are, you know, looking at all of the options in terms of being able to provide what we can provide. I think there are, we have to be realistic about how far in one direction we want to go and whether we've got the capability or whether that would give us any value. I mean, it's not, you know, it's there to be considered, but that's our, as we've looked at this previously and we looked at this last time, and perhaps when we're considering, you know, extension, different types of models around that, it's not something that's scoring as very favourably.
And I would have said no, because if I look at the way, having only been in the Cabinet for 18 months and I look at the way things worked, if we look at the money we put in for the winter service, we put in that extra £20 million, £12 million we delivered this year. If we'd have had our own crews and all our own terms and I had to go out to procurement and to deliver all that through the council procedures, I would have never got it done. Having a partner who's got lots of contractors and people on tap that he can tap into has what's allowed us to actually deliver that, the amount of money in this short amount of time. So I think it would concern me to bring it all in-house because of the amount of paperwork and procedures as a local authority we have to go through. And I think the level where we are, where we're in control of it, but actually as a part someone delivering it, I think is the right balance of keeping a certain amount in-house but actually having the deliverability out there in the marketplace. And I want to add another point on the conversation about how attractive are we to other people? Repairing potholes, there is no money in that at all. Most, and there's a lot of business people around the table, they are lost leaders at the end of the day. So are we attractive from the point of view of the next level of, do we invest in our highways over and above what the government give us? Look at the money we put into it. How attractive is that if you're out there and that's where you can start to make a little bit of money in doing some of the road repairs because that's your bread and butter type of work? We're attractive because actually we're being proactive in what we, as a council, want to put into our network. So I think, yeah, we are attractive out there because of all those reasons. And I think we will have people knocking on the door if we continue on the same road we're going because a lot of other local authorities have not done anything like what we've done.
Value point. And last point.
Don't go along, but pardon for Stephen's question, Colin's reply. Yes, absolutely. Last 18 months or so, you know, the amount of money that's been poured in and the number of roads that have been resurfaced has been really spectacularly good. But the question is, and that, as you're saying, perhaps enhances the profitability of the contractor. But if money from, you know, dries up again and, you know, the ability to do as much work as has been done the last few years, last two years, goes back to what it was two years ago, i.e. very little, then doesn't that also impact negatively on the profitability or the interest that contractors would have? Because that bread and butter work will decline and they'll be back to making no money on potholes. So yes, if it's sustainable, that's great. But if we go from slip, quick, slow, quick, slow, then that will also have an impact, won't it?
And there will always be dips and shocks. Actually, I don't agree with the last two years because actually, go back to Project Horizons, and I'm not going to go into today all the things that went wrong with it, but it was about investing money in our network and we rolled out a good programme. Yes, there was a dip as it got toward the end, but then we stepped up and we've gone in again to do some more. So I think as an authority, they would expect that to happen and as financial situations. But we will continue to find innovative ways of actually doing things on our network. You know, we have a fantastic team, some of them here and some others that you know outside of this group, that really are really switched on to delivering the best possible results for Surrey and its residents and its members and everything else, you know. And I'll take this opportunity, as I probably won't be Cabinet Member for highways going forward, to say thank you to them for the work they've done with me over the last 18 months. Because all the challenges I've laid down, they have been very responsive to work, you know, to how we change that perception. Because to me, the issue was never about what we did, it was about the perception of what we did. And that's what I've tried to change. And they've been very open to all of the challenges and working with me and responding to what members and our residents want.
Thank you, Colin. That concludes all the questions with the exception of one. I noticed from the report that our average spend on the winter service programme is significantly lower than some of our nearby authorities. And I wonder what we're doing right and they appear to be doing wrong? What are we doing differently from other authorities?
Just thinking we are warmer, then that worries me because we must have too much CO2, isn't that right?
Well, obviously...
Only in this room.
If you look at the weather forecast, Kent always get the more snow than we do. But it is an efficient service and it's a constantly adaptable service. You know, if you look at the work that was done over the last 12 months about looking at our gritting roots and how we adapt and how we better get better value for money out of it and change and constantly adapting, I think that's what the service does. So I don't know if there's a technical answer to the question, but that's my perception and from what I've seen from on the ground.
Yeah, I mean, it will vary on, you know, what roads they want to treat and all the rest of it compared to ours and what rates they're getting, what payment arrangements they've got with their contractor. We'll all be slightly different in all of that because of the different priorities the council's put on it. But as Colin said, we are, have looked for efficiencies in that, certainly in our own winter maintenance and sought, had some targeted activities to reduce the cost of our winter programme over the last few years, which some of you should be aware of, yeah.
Okay, thank you. We're going to have a three-minute break while we pull together the recommendations of this committee. So thank you very much for those that took part, and we're prepared.